All right, I'm gonna call the June 1st work session of Norbert Borough Council to order. Mr. Gisardo, we call all.
Sure, President Bush?
Here.
Vice President of Patonopolis is absent. Member Bureau?
Here.
Member Boardner?
Here.
Member McGrueby is absent. Member Rickards?
Uh, here.
Member Winston?
Here.
Mayor Bush?
Here.
Are there any changes or additions to the agenda? I'll make some quick comments on trash because I know this has been something that Presidents have been concerned about lately. So, this week, the memorial is pushed, the trash pickup day. So, everything's gonna be postponed today. In general, you know, if your house has missed, the fastest way to get service is gonna be to call the Republic, our trash provider directly. There is a page on the Borough's website. And if you cannot get through to Republic, then you can let the Borough know. You will reach out to them on behalf. But if you, you know, the Borough does not handle the trash, if you were to call us, we just call Republic. So, the fastest way to get your trash dealt with, if they miss your street, if they miss your pickup, is to contact them directly. We realize it's been a problem. We have, uh, we're gonna be renegotiating our trash contract at the end of the year. And we will be noting the service that we have received from Republic as we consider our options for our next trash contract.
Fred, sometimes the Republic will ask for your account number. What should residents do in that?
Should you say it's the Borough of Norbert? That you are a member of the Borough of Norbert? And there is no, I believe there is no particular account number associated with the Borough. Just tell them you are in Norbert and what your street address is. And that should be sufficient to get pickup.
And we know that there was issues on Friday with pickup. Apparently, there was an issue at the Wey Station, so they had to stop their collection that day. So, they ended up collecting the remaining trash on Tuesday. And they had to push everything back. And to a resident's point, if we know something, we should share that in the news blast. So, going forward, we're gonna do that, just to try and get the word out, if we know of any delays.
Yeah, typically, there is a federal holiday during the week, but it gets pushed today. So, we'll, uh...
Yeah, but this was like double timing.
Yeah, double timing, because they missed it and was memorialized. So, yeah. It's no fun to have your trash sitting on site. We understand. We have the same problem. We live here too. All right. Let me...
Um, I have one exciting announcement, that on Friday, the Borough was delivered or received our Ford 150 electric, fully-electric police vehicle. And we are one of the first in the area to receive a fully-electric Ford 150. And it looks terrific. Everybody's excited to use it. Please stop down to the police station and take a look. And see how we are moving towards environmentally sensitive vehicles in the Borough. It's a very exciting, uh, new truck.
And is it fully outfitted now?
It is fully outfitted, yes.
It's in action.
It's in action. You'll see it driving around town.
As we replace our vehicle fleet, we will be moving to electric vehicles. Our parking controller's already been using non-electric vehicle for the last several months. So, it's nice to see progress.
Yes.
Okay, let's move on to public comments. So, any members of the Republic would like to make a comment?
Well, I'd like to.
You're welcome to.
Yeah, I am. I'm here mainly to talk about the...
You guys, you wanna start with your name and your address?
Oh, sure. My name's Byron McCarthy. I live in 205 Forest Avenue. And I'm here mainly to talk about parking issues that we're having. Sure, you're delighted and all that. We're having some parking issues largely because of the Elm. And let me clarify first by saying, we did speak to the, my wife did, to the interim Borough Manager. And he was very doubtful. And who's that? Okay, Christiana? She spoke to you. She said you were very doubtful. And she was very pleased if you actually even called back some few days later. And thought that was really helpful. And also, what I'm going to say, I'm aware that for the parking enforcement man doing his job as well, now, impossible because there are no block numbers, there are no numbers on any of the stickers that are given at. So, we have people parking on our block who should basically from the Elm. And some of them are using it as a storage facility, basically. She talked to you about one car in particular. That car has moved, but it has been replaced by yet another one that moved this evening, actually, about an hour before it came for about the first time in a week. So, you know, something we'd like, you know, she's in her 70s, 170. Neighbors on both sides have kids who are under 10, and they're coming home with groceries and stuff. We're at this end of the block. It's extremely difficult to find parking most of the time. So, I'm just wondering if, I don't know how it can be enforced, because as I said, stickers have no number on them.
Are these, is this a two-hour zone?
It's a two-hour zone.
And the parking will over two hours?
Oh, they're parking, as I said, two of them are parked for a week at a time. As I said, it is like a storage facility. And they have from the Elm. One of them actually did have 114 Forest written on it. The other doesn't have anything written on it, but I know the person is from the Elm, and so I'm walking there.
So, residents from the Elm should not be able to have access to parking stickers? So, we'll look into that. They should not be able to get the parking stickers?
Yeah, I'm aware of that. So, that's part of what I'm hearing, which is something...
We will be looking into that.
We'll look into that.
We will fix that.
Okay, thank you.
As a point of reference, Barry was my law school professor.
You shouldn't say that.
In the meantime, could we ask Paula to pay attention to that block? Well, it's very hard. Stickers that have the two-hour, I mean, we still register guests. So, we could ask Paula to pay attention to that?
So, they legally have, or they have parking stickers when they're not supposed to have them?
They're about, I would say, I don't know how many, but I'd say it's probably these five brand-new parking stickers. We do have five new P-14s.
Okay, we need to find out what's going on.
But there's no number, except for the one who has since moved and has not parked there since. There's only one that has an actual block number sticker.
Okay.
But again, just can we look into that?
We'll look into that.
We'll look into it.
We'll look into it, yeah.
The other thing I'll just point out is, there can be people who are parking on the street who don't have a sticker, who stay longer than two hours during a restricted period. And it's okay, because they're a registered guest of someone on your block. So, that can be another instance where it may look like, oh, a car hasn't been moved for a really long time?
But those people typically, they have the permit, the guest parking permit. In fact, you're probably aware of one person who's had it for over two years, who is not a guest of anybody. And I think there was an incident involved. It was a green Volkswagen Yama Verdas. But it was parking, and somebody left a rather masky note on that car. And then about two weeks ago, somebody smashed its window.
That was on your block?
On our block.
Okay. We currently need to pay some more attention to the parking issues. I did hear about that. I didn't realize that all of this was on the same block, so...
And that had a permit. But no, I mean, it's easy to see when they have a permit.
Well, there is nothing in the car that shows that there's a guest permit.
Well, it's usually, but no, you're supposed to print, because I found it from my daughter.
Oh, you're supposed to print it and put it in your car? Oh, I guess I've just never noticed anybody actually doing that.
No, they do, but even that...
Okay, good. I'm glad they did that. Okay.
Well, thanks for bringing this attention.
Yeah.
Well, can you stay for a while? You're welcome.
You're welcome.
Anybody online wish to make a public comment?
Jim Riken, do you have any comments? I think we're good to go, yeah.
All right. Thank you. Public comment is closed. Let's move on to Sherman O'Leary, 7A, dispersion of uses.
Sure. So, this is a topic that actually came up first in 2021, then again in 2022, and is now back for really serious consideration. The dispersion for regulation of intensity of use actually came to us via Solicitor Walco, because we were one of the few municipal families that actually do not have one of these. And I don't know how far back we wanna go on the history of this. But after the smoke shop, just for some brief context, after the smoke shop opened on Havertford Ave, we quickly moved to a regulation of use that included check cashing businesses, gun shops, hookah bars, smoke shops, and tattoo parlors. And we said they can only be opened in 5A, which is Montgomery Avenue. We can't outlaw them, because they're legal businesses, but we do have the right to regulate their use. So, we moved that to 5A. We now, with so many vacant properties, buildings for sale, are particularly motivated to consider in 5A, which is Havertford Ave, our downtown, a dispersion ordinance for, uh, four shops possibly by salon, barber shop, nail salons, dry cleaners, and laundry mats, to say you can only have one of these businesses within X amount of feet, to again, regulate the intensity of that use. So, what's on the table? And what finance administration has been thinking about was, okay, when we're talking about 5A right now, there is nothing that prevents us from having on Montgomery Avenue, a strip of smoke shops. I use this example because we're actually, person Solicitor Walco, very vulnerable to it, because the taxation in Philadelphia, right over the border, it's in City Ave, it's more attractive for the shops to open. So, there is nothing right now to say that we could not be a red light district for smoke shops, gun shops, etc. This intensity of use would say you cannot have a regulated business within X amount of feet. The Planning Commission and the county recommended 1,000 feet. I would kind of imagine that is that. In 5A, we're saying, okay, laundry mats, dry cleaners, nail salons, salon harbors. And our Planning Commission is coming back, but it should be greater than 300 or 400 feet. What we'd like to do tonight is to say, can we ask Solicitor Walco to draft up the dispersion ordinance, the intensity of use regulations? For us, that is a full council business meeting to fill in the blanks of those distances. So, the question posed is, how much should the distance be in 5A for those regulated industries, again, the hookah, tattoo, gun shops, soap shop, etc. And what should the distance be for the salon, nail, dry cleaner, laundry mats in 5A? We should note, there is a variance process. So, this is not saying that we would hold the landlord or property owner that's unable to rent their storefront hostage, right? This is someone that, a property owner landlord could appeal for a variance. But we would have control over that 5A and potentially 5B climate, culture, intensity of use. So, should we do the easiest first, Fred?
We think it's easiest.
I think 5B is the easiest. The Planning Commission, I'll be honest, if I, for us, we can go around, had suggested 1,000 feet in between regulated stores. I personally see the reasoning go that high. I would much prefer 500. Again, someone can always apply for a waiver. I personally would prefer to be more conservative with the distance. And then grant exception if needed.
Is it 1,000 feet on Montgomery Avenue?
Montgomery Avenue, 5B, 1,000 feet. For those, for those regulated uses, so that's the check cashing businesses, gun shops, hookah bars, smoke shops, and tattoo parlors.
So, I'm getting a little confused. 1,000 feet seems more restrictive. You can't be within a...
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Hey, yes.
Yeah.
No, I'm confused.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, no, Alex, up here, we're looking at...
No, no, no.
Okay, yeah, yeah, yeah. No, 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 no. 1,000 feet, yes, it'd be more conservative.
That's, that's...
What is your...
I'm sorry. Yes, so I would say 1,000 feet is, we should, I prefer to be more conservative with these regulated uses, 5B, with the understanding that if we really felt as if we wanted two smoke shops closer together, someone could apply for a variance if we need them.
Just to give you a sense of scale, like, 1,000 feet is a little over a block. Like, if you go from Seabide to Price, that's about 8,000 feet. If you go from Price to Woodbine, that's over 300 feet. So, that's about the distance we're talking about.
1,000 feet for a borough is a lot. That's like, as the great flies, and we do a bubble at 1,000, that's gonna like, knock out a little, it's huge.
I'm not sure you could have, I mean, we've also got rules for how close you have to be to a school and a park. So, I think between the two of those, you're not gonna be able to put two businesses of that type in our 5A. So, I don't...
Well, tattoo...
Yeah, two of the regular uses. You'd be allowed two in.
So, 1,000 would essentially regulate it to one of these regulated uses on Montgomery Avenue. So, that, I'm comfortable with, Planning Commission, Charlie, I am comfortable with, Sarah.
Yeah, I'm fine with that. But that was each very, very different.
Regulated use, one 5B.
But that's small subset of the, not the one, not the...
The hookah bar, tattoo, Gina, go to traffic downtown, Barbara?
Yes, I just wanna make sure that we're all talking about the same thing. Because the Planning Commission recommended that the distances would be set to avoid concentration to each use, not to give a lot that allow, whether or not it be used overall. So, but I wasn't sure if I, I know, but I wasn't sure if what I just heard was, you know, if you've got a hookah bar, then you can't have anything else in that regulated use area within that 1,000 feet. I just wanna make sure I understood what we're...
So, we can do that, because that was essentially that the outlaw line. So, 5B, but we can't do that.
It would be hookah bar to hookah bar.
It'd be the same use, right? Because it's the same.
Correct.
We can't say hookah bar to tattoo bar.
Correct.
Got it. I just wanna make sure it's like, right, because that was...
Because then would essentially be outlawed.
So, I wanna go back to this, the, um, the limitation, you have to be a certain distance from a school state near you, so... To 1,000 feet with that, we created an ordinance that basically is the bucket at any of these. And that's what I just wanna make sure that we're not, that we haven't. So, this would be a question for Charlie. That we, have we stepped over too far and we're now allowed that, that's made, which says, you know, you're not allowed to outlaw on certain uses.
So, he did outlaw this and suggest this law. Not the feet, regulation uses. And the only thing, tattoo parlor is not controlled by a school. I think your parlor is a smoke shop.
Well, right. Well, Kevin, this is, this is in the, in Todd's, but...
So, we have some uses that are currently, can't be within 500 feet of a school, right? Or a daycare, or a church. I think that if we, in addition, say you can't put a second one fit in 1,000 feet, there might not be space for a second. So, we have to make sure that that's okay.
That's what I'm getting at.
Yeah, the first one you can fit in, you're responsible for the first one. The second one, you can't be within that because of churches and schools.
Absolutely. We're not running about. I mean, because one of the things that Montgomery County Planning Commission points out is that these ordinances have not been challenged in court yet. So, we don't know what, you know, I, you know, so let's just make sure we...
Yes.
Don't have all our eyes across all our teeth, so that we're not absolutely creating some...
What this service does is, um, to the school, the daycare.
Forget what's in our code right now. But that's just for a smoke shop. Is it just for... I just wanna be sure more than it's restricted here on regular uses. I think so. I'm pretty sure that it's more than that.
I think it's also a store.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. It's, yeah, some specific definitions for the use.
Okay.
So, the question then is to, no, keep in mind, what John would bring next week, he can fill in the exact numbers.
We're gonna wanna make sure that we aren't overstepping where we're allowed to do. That's all I'm asking.
We have John, we have John.
I will tell him, this is the recommendation. People can, we know it's high, it's 1,000 feet.
Okay, that's fine. That's our concern, isn't it? We're allowed to do that.
Fred, are you comfortable with that? If I, if Walco, are we able to go 1,000 feet or that?
It's not, yes, it sounds like everybody is, uh, yeah, the correct, the current is, if you've got adult uses, it has to be 500 feet from private school, elementary school, little school, a place of worship, public park, childcare, or school.
Have we defined the uses?
Adult uses.
Are there any schools within, like, your field of, that one you have?
You have Wonder Springs.
Yeah, we have, we have.
Mary and Thursday.
Wonder Springs, there's another, there'd be another daycare coming in.
There's gonna be one, yeah, the kinder care is coming in to...
There's like, there's stuff on the other side, too.
Oh, yes, and we'll just...
All right, so we've got that part.
Okay. 5A, that we've identified, salon, barber, nail, dry cleaner, laundry mats. There was some discussion over a dollar or a discount store. You know, Walco said that would have to very carefully be defined. So, I don't know if we even feel, we don't think we'd do that. Right now, we have kind of agreed upon four, laundry mats, dry cleaner, nail, salon, and barber shop. And this, though, as we discussed, is different in that it's, again, it's salon to... The question is, is it like salon to salon or salon to dry cleaner?
Planning Commission has suggested salon to salon.
Yeah.
Not salon to dry cleaner, right?
I think that makes sense.
Right, right, that makes sense, right.
And the Planning Commission said it should be greater than 300 to 400 feet. John has had suggested 500 feet.
That makes sense.
And that's what it is.
You have hair salon, is there a nail salon now? Okay, just the salon?
Hair, barber, nail salon.
Okay.
Dry cleaner, laundry mats. Again, there is a variance on it. So, if there is a store that is vacant, then it will be, of course, they can rent it, because within one of these regulated testing uses, it can ask for a variance.
And just to, just to measure a distance, so from Essex to North Norbert is about 600 feet. So, that is like the entire downtown, it's, or else, it's about 600 feet.
You could have one on Essex and then maybe one on...
Or Norbert.
Yeah.
500 is, uh, yeah, that's impressive.
That seems like a lot.
500 seems too much.
Okay, like, you're really running, I, I, you know, I feel like someone could make a peaceful, you're really trying to... Because that's just pushing so far apart. Are you, do you have any chance of finding a store running within 100? So, that feels a little bit...
Okay, so they said distance between service uses in 5A district should be no greater than 200 or 400 feet. The goal should be to allow one more, they want to be a type of business covered by a dispersion of use, at least, in 4A. They would like to make recommendations once first Solicitor uses your ordinance for review. And then we'll look at the maps, a little bit block lines. So, what I would do is take back our questions to John Walco. He's written several times. They will re-draft it. I'll kick it back to the Planning Commission. They will make comments in preparation for our business meeting.
Are we comfortable with the question? Commission is saying about how existing service uses in 5A can be here in Northern...
I think they have to...
Yeah, yeah, well, no, no, but they're saying new uses would have to be separated from each other, not existing uses. So, yeah, so that's where I just, you know, that's it. They're saying so.
I don't, I don't think they're saying that the first new one doesn't...
I...
I think they're saying that...
You read, you read that very well.
That's a recommendation.
Yeah, bullet point. And I'm like, um, new uses would have to be separated from each other, non-existing uses, so as to prevent non-conformities and present circumstances where new businesses... So, I wasn't quite sure what they were saying. I just, yeah. And, and so it may be worth asking back to them, so I need to make sure.
Okay.
Especially, you know, if, if John looks at this and tries to draft something, follow that, that's not probably what they meant.
Okay.
So, because I wasn't clear on the... No, I completely, it already adopted these uses in place.
Sure, right, we're not saying, we're not saying that it's the third one, that we would look at. The second thing would, I mean, because it became compared to grandfathered ones.
I would imagine the ones that are already here are already...
Correct, so they're saying, is it then a distance from the grandfather to the new one?
I would imagine, yes.
Well, let's see.
But that's not how I sound like so bad.
So, just you should confirm, you should confirm to John Walco that it will...
Actually, you need to confirm with the Planning Commission of what they mean in their letter.
Right, right, right.
Okay. Because we all read it. Okay, I will send that to Todd, I will send that to John Walco. We will have a draft for our business meeting.
Always add pets.
That's fine.
So, are we going to stay for the 5A? A specific feet, whether or not you should displace or wait until the Planning Commission has opened maps to see, is it 300 feet, is it 400 feet?
I just would like to go with the maps, probably.
Yeah, that's, that's what I'm raising right now.
Does anybody have, are you comfortable, Gina, that Planning Commission working at maps a little closer?
If it were me, I'd say this would be like crazy.
Yeah, I know.
Would it be, would it be smaller, the salon?
Yeah.
Yeah. Some garage, yeah. Salon on this side. It's okay.
Okay. Okay, so that's...
You would say, uh, fair.
Yeah, that's okay.
Well, yeah, go ahead. It's very...
What was it, sleep?
Well, because, um, I just think that, you know, maybe in, maybe in a while when I start seeing businesses, you know, I don't even... But right now, we're all with vacancy, and, you know, I can't do things that limit the ability of people to, you know, work over there. It is an issue with me. I know some of it is due to the fact that there's uncertainty about the future, you know, but it's still... But then, I'm not like wildly against that. It's not like, you know, like, if I had veto power, I'm not that sure.
Well, I'm here. Your comments don't go without yours.
Yeah.
I think it's a consideration, you say, well, if you have vacant spots, what's better? A dry cleaner, a vacant spot. However, I will say John and Samantha, we're both pretty clear. Once you have a row of nail salons and laundry mats in a city community, there's no going back. So, once there is, you can't say, much like the smoke shop, oh, actually, this is not what we wanted for our town. Which is why I feel comfortable, because there's a variance, but we're not.
I also feel like the ordinance, the dispersion ordinance protects the existing businesses, so it's not too much competition in the same type of places within the same block. But I feel like that's not good for those businesses that have a limited...
And, you know, people used to say when we first got council, why do you allow so many dry cleaners? And my answer was always, because Norbert was that P-shirt. And my opinion's changed on that a little bit. Walco went the scary way and said, you know, we already sound in transition, there's lots of sales of properties and storefronts. And perhaps we should be proactive before we are in a situation that we have lost our ability to change out of the culture of our downtown. And people like barber shops, salons, dry cleaners, and laundry mats all can now be delivered by hand. So, these are the service issues that apparently are profitable.
Being in a brick and mortar business, I've seen situations, particularly where two stores of the same type, like same merchandising... like same merchandising, open within like a block of each other, uh, canceling each other out, both fail. Uh, so it didn't allow one of them to, to, you know, start to grow, develop its space. And because they were both in the same space, um, they, not a once, and it was, it was, it was just, you end up in two different spaces.
And I think also that we, I think we, we need to recognize that the variance may, you know, that there may be people applying for that. And that we need to see how this plays out over time too. We may decide this is too restrictive, we need to keep your council, but we need changes to it. Cause I, I look, you know, you, you, your point about the dry cleaners and, you know, we have seen where the borough had more dry cleaners than it has today and some of them closed. But we still have a lot of dry cleaners, I think, for ten first five, so I'm still always amazed. But they obviously make money or they wouldn't be here. Uh, we have multiple, our salons, and they seem to all be doing great. So, you know, if there's an empty storefront and the only person that's raising their hand to start a business in there is a, is a... Well, I wanted, I wanted to come before council and ask for, or ask for a variance and get in there. Because I don't want us to leave spaces empty. Just because we want diversity when the market isn't going to give us that. I mean, so, so we have, that's why, and that's also why I think we really want us, that one planning commission to get as there's once on the districts, too, so that we're not, um, so that we're doing something that's realistic to, like, help.
Do we? Did you mention brick stores? Do we want to add anything for sure?
Well, this was the, the one that we really would have to think about. We thought about like dollar store, discount stores. Those, those do have to be really carefully defined. I can ask John to add that in, I mean, that's an additional question I have here.
I mean, only if you've got, I don't know what you all think.
I don't know what you mean by first store, can you tell?
Second hand store.
Oh, so like Revivus?
Yeah, no, I understand Revivus is leaving as well.
Really?
Yes.
All right, right. Okay, but, so here's what I would say, if you have, I, I think you could make an argument for, like to have more than, you know, like have several. Um, okay, second hand stores. And I understand the borough because it creates a destination for people because they're gonna be like, you know what? I'm gonna go and whoop, they're all close together and this is great. So, and this is where I think it gets really, and we've had this conversation, I think, before about can we really decide what the market wants? No, we can't. And this is, you know, so...
I think the first stores, like, we tell, it's brand, they have their, it's, it's terrible. Those are more serious, I think, so it's, it's a different category. Okay, which is why we kind of question, you know, John initially said, you have a look at dollar store, you know, you don't want dollar generals. That is really tricky to define. Which is why we actually put that one on the back first. So I'm not hearing an overwhelming urge to open up that discussion again. Okay.
Yeah, I think, I think we're ready to, a little long, get it back to us.
Okay, then we will see this at our next meeting.
Once we get planning commission, we'll go. Just that we do hear a lot of public comment about this, what can we do about this? This is what we can do.
Yeah, we can do, yeah. Can't they be...
Also.
Yeah.
All right, uh, seven B, Iona.
Um, so I'll, I'll speak on Rob's behalf here, and he's been really, uh, responsive to the residents of Iona in two hundred blocks, which I may remember, uh, record. Uh, leads to that, at least, uh, two thousand and five, when I moved in on the traffic and the road design to building up, um, two hundred, three hundred block of Iona. And all, but it's easier for me to count houses that have not been to public meetings, all but four houses in the children's block that were, and that have been to the last five meetings? Yeah, six meetings, well, of public health and safety to talk about, um, in terms of the street. There have been two, uh, prior to this latest investigation, two traffic studies of that quarter. Again, since my time of two thousand and five, uh, that have documented the street as narrow, uh, for parking on both sides and the amount of density. Uh, so we've got a traffic engineer, um, come out, keep the residents looking again. And what Mike found was getting, it's not a speed issue on Iona, it's a density issue on Iona. Twenty-five miles per hour, which if no control over the borough, is, is too fast for any of our streets with the level of biking and pedestrians. You can't do anything about that. What Mike did find was that there is significant cut through traffic and density for that street that is narrow with double sided park. Uh, so what he has recommended is that the no left hand sign in the morning, sign for backup. That was put up and then taken down because no one had allowed us by it, um, unless there was an officer sitting there. So he said, well, why do we have a sign that? We can't force, and we're not gonna use our lease to sit on the corner by evidence or ever so rarely. Uh, so it's taken down as part of our sign by it. He recommended putting that back up and then we, we collect that data on, is there a significant, um, decrease in density to result of that sign? Uh, I did let him know that the density is probably at about fifty percent from the bridge. It was definitely will have this outside traffic come through. So he was hard fighting the part of, woo, with the bridge closed. Uh, and he did recognize that there is this kind of game of chicken where people do speed up to try to navigate Iona. So what he is recommending is the return of the no left hand sign, collecting close to death data. Uh, he is recommending a pilot speed hump. This would be the first pilot for the borough. Uh, it is a temporary speed hump that actually can be parked on, um, and has the lower, no, it's not temporary. You would asphalt it, right? Yeah.
You asphalt it.
Because the temporary is louder. So you would asphalt this, this speed hump, but it does not take away the car. We will, we can put the sign up home of the future Iona speed hump. However, we should note that, uh, there is only one spot on the block that can be placed. Both of those residents were in the meeting, advocating for, never was for the sign. Uh, and then narrowing the intersection as a traffic common tool. Uh, we had asked Mike to explore perhaps using two of the store order bump outs, given that we might choose anyway, that perhaps this would be an opportunity for us to say, we will not compete our store order bump out requirement, but we can also use that tool as a traffic common tool. So those are the three recommendations. Again, it serves as a pilot, um, for other street common tools.
Alan, would Mike, um, uh, it would be okay for small malls?
Yep, all fires, like, it's a speed hump. So it's not, you're not gonna bottom out, okay, for bikes, for emergency vehicles, etc., etc. Yeah, those are correct.
Um, so, we can, her, we can go ahead. The other thing I was unclear on in the memo is it says that proposed improvements can be implemented together or as standalone traffic common, or if we want a phase approach. So I think he's saying we can do all three of these things right now, or you guys can choose one from the other. But I wasn't sure.
Your recommendation of public health and safety was that we did.
Okay, that's what I wondered, what did I help us do?
Well, then what can turn?
I think I'll do that.
Uh, we have to start thinking about these store order bump outs to begin with. And the speed hump really is a valid deal, we've talked about it a lot of the time.
Yeah, I know, I just was, I wasn't sure, yeah, with that, with safety, right?
Yep.
They said do all three right now, or you would face...
We can say, we should do all. Also, like, I think we, um, a traffic engineer mentioned that they would check the, check maybe the seats of the emergency vehicle. Yep, to make sure that they can hold that surface.
Put it in the door.
Yep. So we approve this? That would be Mike's next question.
Yeah, I should say, if you, just to move into the design base, what we're looking for. I am concerned that with the intersection bump outs, with the emergency vehicles, who have that, they don't, they flush out the design portion, so... Why they're concerned, whether it's, you know, if you put a speed bump on that street or other blocks, and then say, well, we want a speed hump too.
Probably, and that's why I mean, they likely will. Why they talk about it as a plan?
Yeah, so like, just from my personal experience, me commuting back to Roxboro, like, I can't go back up Haverford, obviously, so like, I end up going down Windsor, Iona, to turn left to go to up to Woodbine, to go to Montgomery Avenue Light. So if I can't turn there, then I turn on the stick, so you just gotta, you know, if you make it restricted there, it might cause a problem on the other. That's probably...
It's always a counterpoint.
Yep.
Yeah, it's, it's only certain times of the day, right?
Well, it would be during, no, it's a left turn, the speed bump doesn't... Well, it'd be during commuting time, so then I, yeah.
You're saying, yeah.
That's finally the thing that I was gonna say about that.
And really, you know, I had asked Mike about this too. I would venture to say the longest, one of the longest straight aways is from Montgomery, from Meeting House to Iona. I mean, that was a significant speedway. There's no stop sign, there's nothing to slow, you have people down the way to Montgomery, at Meeting House to Iona. Um, yes. Yep, I mean, everybody.
I'm trying to, yeah, actually, yes.
Is that that would potentially, I mean, we have talked about that straight for ages as well, that that would be the next step is to consider a hump to break up that, that from a really busy road of cut grids, to break up that, that had a speed issue. So, but for right now, we're just asking, can we give my green light to move it forward?
All right, so the recommendation, uh, Mike's recommendation or comment was that Pendot's handbook, traffic common measures should ultimately be voted on by impacted residents with a recommended seventy percent approval threshold prior to implementation. Should the borough decide to move forward and improve, it's noted below. Consideration should be given to a resident survey along the avenue. Now, I know people will come meetings.
If you want the formal one, we can do that.
Well, I mean, that's our, that's our recommendation for our traffic engineer.
She needs to do it for a pilot.
So for the petition, wasn't there like twenty-five to thirty residents that had signed the petition?
There, oh, you're right, actually, we do it the informal.
Yeah, I think we could probably look at that and see if that supposes.
Sure, or potentially you could reach out to more residents. Maybe get, if that's not enough, then perhaps other people could sign on. We can count the ones who are already signed on to the, uh, to the petition as support and then...
Is that a legal requirement or...
We do not have a legal requirement. Other, other municipalities do. Pendot has a recommendation, so it's not a legal requirement. We could decide to move ahead without that. We could say we've got a lot of people, but...
We do.
And Alan, Mike hasn't even signed that petition, cause I'm a councilor.
I think it would be smart to follow Pendot's recommendation.
Well, we have the petition.
Right, right, so just...
Yeah, as long as that petition is seventy percent of the residents.
Let's, let's, let's expand that petition as necessary.
Okay, so can we then say, uh, I mean, we get seventy percent?
Once we get seventy percent, we will, we will move forward.
Yeah, we'll try and take it better at the business meeting as well. Yeah, okay.
Right.
Is, so that's seventy percent of the residents on that stretch?
Two hundred, right.
The two blocks, are the two blocks?
It's one block, one block.
Well, but we're saying we're not gonna affect the ones north of Meeting House. Saying just the ones between Windsor and Meeting House?
That's the proposed block, yeah.
This is, that's where, that's where the
Sign.
The hump would be the sign and the bump outs in that block, yeah.
Okay.
Um, did the Public Health and Safety Committee, uh, have anything, noting what Mike said there, that Narberth does not have an ordinance pertaining to traffic common? Is that something that we should, you know, should be thinking about someday? I don't know, I just wonder.
If somebody else comes to us with a request or...
That's what I'm saying, when we, when we, you know, this issue of, as this is gonna raise, other people saying, I want a speed up on my street. Maybe we should have traffic common ordinance.
So I don't wanna speak for Rob, his chair, but I mean, I think, not I think, I know, the number one completely guy is about traffic and speeding. And this is actually a perfect example of why we have John Sterling, who's both the Chief of Police and the Director of Public Health and Safety, and why we have two of the TAC members, and Jeff actually certified in Crime Prevention Through Environmental Design, saying like, how do you use the environment to, again, slow traffic? Um, I, I would say, I think that, that this is something we can, um, leave John in, we could leave infrastructure in, we could, I mean, this is really something all three committees can work on and respond to what is, again, the overwhelming complaint of our neighbors.
Uh, we have, generally, we have one officer on at the time. We have eleven miles of roadway within our borough. So, um, you know, just doing the math, you know, you got one guy covering eleven miles at, at Henry Dunton Town. Um, and, uh, so there's limitations on what we, in and of themselves can do, so design makes a lot of sense.
Like Cindy said, we don't have a speeding problem, we just have a volume issue and the, so with the layout of the borough, we have narrow streets, narrow sidewalks, so someone going twenty-five feels a lot faster.
Feels a lot faster, yeah.
Yeah, I was driving to work this morning, I was like, I was like, wow, it's just amazing that they, how they laid everything out so narrow.
And with parking on both sides of the street, it just, it feels like a lot going on.
So I definitely think this is something that we can ask Katie Skine, who went through the, um, through the certification process, and Jeff Eldon went through the certification process. I mean, John wasn't here yet, but John spoke about this in his interview, he's using the built environment to traffic common.
I, I would say this is maybe not a priority, you wanna take on Justice Smith, though.
No, I, I, I was, I was putting this as a, is this something that...
Aspirational.
Yeah, because it, it just, I'm like, oh, maybe this would be good. Because just like, what was it, two years ago or so, when the Public Health and Safety Committee came up with, here's how residents can raise an issue on traffic to us, that there's a definite process for that. And what you go through to, and what, what the steps are in it, we'll be taking to see whether there's a change that needs to be made. Thinking, you know, do we, we've started this, should we keep going, you know, as an ordinance, uh, next, kind of thing to think about.
And, and part of it, like, with the bump outs that we're gonna have to go as part of our requirements, can be, so there's, there's committee overlap.
Yes.
Um, so they can, the, the committee should likely work together to, to help figure this out.
Yeah, part of the conversation, yes, I think we absolutely should do this. I think we should get settled and think about then how we align grants and work really strategically with this. Uh, and, you know, one of the comments from me and Public Health and Safety was, well, we've all, we're all committed to evidence-based decisions, and those data that are collected by that engineer are critically important. However, asking the officers to move the grants is always a subjective perspective as well. And we shouldn't be, be asking them their thought as a data point.
They have the on-the-ground real world experience.
Yeah.
And speaking to the process, the seventy percent threshold seems to be a good, um, threshold to, um, build into the process, to initiate something like that.
Yeah, initiate the study of it, for sure. It's not seventy percent approval.
Right.
But seventy percent of the residents have to desire some, some sort of check. Yeah.
I believe right now, all you need is three signatures from concerned residents to make it...
To starting, yep.
Well, but some of that is for like signs and things, and not like, you know, not physical obstacles.
Yeah, yeah, it's not...
Say that if you want, if you want something permanent or something beyond, uh...
The four-way stop sign.
Yeah, beyond, beyond, beyond this change in the stop sign.
Well, but I think we need to be careful that it's not a seventy percent approval rating. So for example, on our public streets, we're making decisions about that infrastructure. That does not require a seventy percent.
Correct, but we're saying, we're, we're not gonna put in, we're not gonna put in a speed bump on a residential street unless the residents really want. I mean, that's, that's the difference here. The speed bump is there totally to serve the residents' needs. Um, and at that case, you really do need...
I mean, arguably, it's public, but I just wanna be clear in the public, we're not saying seventy percent of the people...
Yeah, if we didn't put in a fire hydrant, we're gonna put a fire...
You can charge your, the fire hydrant, the bump out, yeah.
And the bump out's also, yeah, in that same degree, we're gonna need to put it.
For, for...
Where it makes sense.
Exactly.
Okay.
Okay. So Alan, you and Mike, we'll confirm that with seventy percent, and if not, we'll get that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Correct, and then we'll notify people when we're getting close to actually installing. I say this is gonna be until it's done.
I think that's a good, I mean, we're, we need to make the signs, future home of our initiative anyway.
Jeff had mentioned, you know, we could order some yard signs just to put out.
Okay, that's correct.
Okay, they have to be fancy, it's gonna be there then.
Right. And then if we could do something general, then we can use it for other spaces later.
That's right, right, you have the top part be future home of Narberth, they, block party, whatever.
We can say future home of, and then fill it like, you know, fill in the blank.
All right, block party, Alex, you have it.
Sure, so, um, block party application sets the...
You're trying to speak up for us.
Yeah.
Yeah. Block party application, it tells you how long you can have the street closed for. So right now, you can only have it closed until nine P M. Um, the borough has in the past granted some exceptions for people to do it to ten P M., which is reasonable weekends and holidays because we always require hours to kick in until eleven P M. So I'm asking council to consider extending it from nine to ten P M., which gives them an hour to like kind of clean everything up, get everything put away, you know, before eleven o'clock. And I think that's pretty reasonable. Um, my only concern with that was, you know, with being dark out, you know, it's hard to see. Um, I spoke with the police, public workers, he said, just make sure you have more reflective equipment out, which public workers has. Um, he said they have no problem providing it for a street closure. So.
So I recently have had a request, somebody approached me to extend a block party thing to a little bit later.
Try the same one then.
You're probably saying, yeah, I, I didn't quite know how to, how to handle that, how to approach it. But then I saw this on the agent.
Yeah. So the application, because it lists the specific hours, I didn't wanna say go ahead, go ahead without, yeah, I wanna get council to weigh in and approve any type of change in policies and all.
All right. Does anybody have any objection to changing the hours to ten to that weekend policy?
I just asked a question because I, I can never remember what our noise requirements are. I started to go back and look at the ordinance. And it's different Sunday evening from Friday morning. It's to eight P M. But then nine P M. during daylight savings time. And then Friday evening through Sunday morning is, in federal holidays, eleven P M. But then midnight during, during daylight savings. So like, I don't have a problem with changing it to say ten P M., but I wanna make sure are we saying that for every day?
Yeah. So here's what I'll do. So I, I have to approve all the permits of the address. So if somebody's requesting a block party for a weekday.
Yeah.
I can't say you can have it until ten. It would be then until eight. And then if it is weekend or holiday, then it can be until ten P M.
Let's just Friday and Saturday.
This would just, it would, it would just move it up to ten. Um, and it's, and it does say there, it's based on, uh, noise hour for the noise ordinance. So I can say to somebody, well, no, it's eight because it's a weekday for noise ordinance. You know, if you have to close at eight.
It doesn't exactly say that, but it could be, it, it's in there, but the time isn't connected to the noise ordinance. So you might wanna just tweak that a little so you don't get into semantic arguments.
Yeah.
So, and, and just, just to clarify, the block party permit gives them the, the equipment to set up to block the road, right? And so by the end of the permit, they, the, the people taking out the permit need to remove the stuff.
Yeah. So then they, they pile up on the side of the road.
Okay.
To pick up. And just so you know, in order to get a block party permit, you have to have seventy percent of the people on the block have to, uh, sign up on the application.
Right.
So I don't think we'll have like too many issues with that. It's like the neighbors want.
Neighbors are in here.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
I wonder if it would make sense to write on the permit application just to say what the noise, noise ordinance hours are. And then, um.
It might be too much text for the application. I mean, I could, I could.
Have you ever had to tell people to, to put it short because they're gonna do it on a day?
Cause like right now.
Yeah. I don't think it's likely. I think Mark has a, has a very.
Well, reason about, part of the reason I was saying that is that, then you can make the language say one hour before.
Yeah.
So what, what I could do is like, it says number five, the borough's noise ordinance will not be violated. I can put something a little more specific in there about hours. I'll try and make it as sure as possible because this is already a lot of text to put on the application.
And that's where I was just like, ah, so that's why I wasn't suggesting changing that so much. But if you're, if you're going to have different stop times for different days of the week, then it gets me messy. That's why I was saying, are we comfortable with saying, eh, you know, you can have an extra hour if you're the, the Monday through Thursday night, or Sunday, Thursday.
Yeah.
And have them all be the same. I don't know. That, you know, have, have every day of the week at the ten. For block party. I'm sure there's gonna be somebody who says.
Yeah.
But if somebody does, yeah, we'll, we'll pay close attention to that. And I'll, I'll make sure the language is a little clearer because if I'm reading it again, it looks a little, yeah, okay.
I just, I'm like, somebody's gonna.
Yeah.
We should have reflective stuff on the, on the equipment regardless because it's in the matter of if it's nine or ten o'clock, it's generally dark.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So.
All right. So it sounds like council is capable of changing for Fridays, Saturday, holidays.
I would just ask for a motion to second, just to have a.
I'd like to make a motion to, last, block party, move to change the ten and one parties on Friday and Saturday night.
And holidays.
And holidays. Second.
Second.
Further discussion. All right. Your opponent changed the block party hours to ten P M. Fridays, Saturday, holidays. All in favor? All right. Uh, committee reports.
Structure. So the structure did not meet, but there is one item I, I just thought, uh, briefly mentioned, which is there, uh, we're in the process of getting, uh, we got a price book, but getting mockups of a replacement for the Narberth, up to Narberth sign on, on the tunnel. Um, the goal is to match the existing, to make it look as much like the existing sign as possible. Okay? Once we have those mockups, we're gonna, before we order it, we're gonna show it to people, um, including, um, to, um, Jim Spear, who was the one, um, like, um, two years ago, he was, uh, suggested that, maybe it was a year and a half ago, suggested that we take a look at that, that the sign is in, uh, best shape right now. And we wanna try to replicate it. So.
Okay. I mean, we have had other people reach out to us about that. So if we don't, like, to offer your services, if you don't like, you offer this on the table, there may be other options out there to.
Is that, is that something that we should ask, if you're in terms of part of getting the whole.
Yes. Yes. It's just that, I mean, it has, it's been a point of while and it has some, has to our volumes. So people want to, as much as possible, you know, try to replicate the mockup.
I don't think we're committed to doing that though. So.
No, we have.
If we're gonna look at it, we're gonna get our proposal.
So, yeah, so Jeff did get a proposal, um, it was very reasonable. And essentially what Jeff told the guy was, replicate the sign, how much would it cost? So the cost that he came back with was about nine hundred eighty-five dollars in store, this design. And it would be an exact replica. So we can do that, but if we wanna do like an alternative design that would get, we'd want feedback on that. Like if we wanted to put like the borough's logo on it or something, or, you know, that's where I would wanna get feedback from, cancel it or.
I'm gonna think you're gonna, you're gonna get pushback if you try that.
I don't, I don't see, I don't see a lot of reason to mess with what's there. If you start hearing from people who say otherwise, then.
Well, I think we could, we could put something in the flash with a picture of the proposal and say, you know, we would like, uh, because I believe that while some of the, um, some of the, uh, Kito.
Yeah.
Someone said, well, why not change the sign, like while the logo's.
And we looked at trying to fix it while it was there, that it is, there was no way to really repair it in any useful ways. So.
I remember one time there was some concern that maybe impact would allow us to put anything on there.
It's there.
I know, but if we, if we put a new one up, have we checked on that?
I don't feel the need to check on.
Yeah. It's not asking a question. I think it's better.
You know. All the more reason to, to replicate, to make it look the way it looks now.
Yeah, I was gonna say, so I just, we prepared that maybe someday they may take it down, just like they ripped out all of the nice plantings on the training.
It is, it is possible.
Yeah. I just, I just wanted to think about that.
Telling us that they, uh.
And they want it gone. So we maybe don't wanna spend a lot of.
Well, I'm pretty glad about that.
No, no, I'm not saying that. No, I'm not saying that's a lot of money. I'm saying we don't wanna spend a lot of, it's that.
Not that.
To recognize we were.
So just so we're clear, so I didn't propose the exact replica. Am I just supposed to bring that back to, to council? Is that fine?
Yes. Bring it back to council. We'll, we'll go on at that time.
Okay.
But depending on the timing, there may be an infrastructure, whatever.
That's my thought was bringing it to.
It's a practical, it's an extract process.
Yeah. Okay.
Anything else, Howard?
Minutes.
Okay. Uh, clients for the inspiration?
Uh, we did not.
Okay. Uh, Public Health and Safety.
Wow.
Well, it's not here. So.
Iron app is the whole.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Uh, are there any announcements to give to council? Music.
We have, it's just coming up, uh, June, July, arts and, uh, art sounds, what? The dog parade. Uh, so, yes.
Feel free to take your own.
Actually, I, I think, instead of, nobody asked me about special again.
Oh, no?
I, I'm actually working when, when it's over. So.
Great.
Yeah. Yes.
They moved it up. All right. Uh, and then the music's in the park, music, the concerts in the park are also starting on. Next week.
Yes.
Yeah. Next week, Wednesday, they'll be, uh. Can't remember, seven thirty, seven o'clock. So they'll be starting up.
Look for an.
Yeah, look for announcements for the concerts.
Jemlee Owens.
Uh, every Wednesday during summer.
And it is Jumpweed coming up next week. And I just wanna let folks know that, um, like favorite week of the year. Uh, and so, uh, it's a grumbling up week. And it's a good week to start clearing out your house, getting rid of bulk items. Even though you're allowed to, uh, put out one bulk item a week, this is a great opportunity to clear out, you know, clear our houses. And it's, uh, it's good for fire safety. It's good for a number of reasons.
Good for strolling around Lovely Harbor.
Yes.
Mike, 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 out there, make sure to put that in flash. Okay?
Yes. One, one thing for people to think about is trash pickup is Saturday. So if you're like me and you live on a block where they're gonna pick up your, your cleanup waste stuff on Monday, and you put things out Saturday and Sunday that you want your neighbors to walk around and find to take, what is a sign that says not for trash pickup?
Yes.
Because there are good people who've got things picked up that they were like, oh, no, I love it.
Yeah, that's what I did.
It's just something to think about.
Yes.
Well, there will be a bike survey, um, coming out, uh, which is, it's done through Greater Valley Forge T M A. And, um, they're fighting for driver programs and, and they want to collect responses from everybody to figure out what, um, what are the barriers to getting people to bike more. And, um, that will be going out soon.
Yeah. I just have to.
All right.
I just have one other thing. So, um, the carpet on the first and second floor out there is going to get replaced. They have a proposal to do it. Their coasters are gonna be put out.
I couldn't hear the white carpet on the.
Carpet, the first and second floor out here.
Okay.
It's all stained, you know, it looks real bad.
That's relatively new.
Yeah, that carpet.
I think so.
But that was part of the building, you know. So we got the building loaned and we budgeted money to have that replaced. So we have a vendor who gave us approval to do it. And they can come in on a weekend and get it done in one shot. So we don't disrupt the office at all.
Okay.
Um, and it's like a nice gray that'll match like existing, like carpet that we have out there. Um, so I just wanted you to know that that'll be by the summer that it'll be done.
Good.
All right. And the air conditioning should be finally done.
At the end of the month, I'm, I'm told. Uh, it's, it's supposed to be delivered on June eighth, or shipped on June eighth. And hopefully they can get it installed by the end of the month. They do have to go up onto the roof to do the work. So, uh, I know we don't have like a roof access, so they'll have to, they'll have to use a crane, obviously to lift it, put it up onto the roof. It's a pretty big production. Yeah.
But since we have a temporary unit in the office, we don't anticipate having to close the office for key.
No, not that. Yeah, we have a purple unit. Yeah.
All right. All right. I think that's it for announcements. Uh, we are gonna have the executive session afterwards to talk about a personnel matter regarding the Borough Manager Search, a personnel matter update for the interim manager, disposition of borough own property at two thirty Haverford Avenue, and probably discussion of ongoing loss. We will return to session afterwards to deal with, uh, the, not related to the personnel man, the Borough Manager Search. Uh, I'll split my moments. We will return afterwards. Uh, the motion to adjourn. Second. All right. All those in favor of the adjournment?
Right.
All right. We are adjourned. All right. We are, uh, returning, re convening, uh, our Thursday, June first work session. Uh, we just held an executive session to discuss personnel matter regarding Borough Manager Search.
Uh, I move that we extend an offer of employment for our manager, Ken Camerelli, condition of Mr. Camerelli's successful completion of his background investigation, drug screening, and proof of COVID nineteen vaccination. My second.
Sir, second.
My second.
Suppose there's no chance of like coming back, you pronouncing.
Did I pronounce? How do I spell? C A M M I L L E R.
Yeah. Uh, there's a second discussion. All those in favor of sending the offer to Mr. Camerelli? All right, T M S. And at this point, we will once again return into executive session to discuss, uh, the personnel matter from the interim manager, disposition of borough own property at two thirty Haverford Avenue, potential loss.
You'll be returning?
We will be returning once again.
Oh.
To make another motion. This will be three. I will take a motion to adjourn.
So.
Here's a second.
Second.
All right. All those in favor of adjourned into executive session? Okay. Meeting is. All right. We are once again resuming our work session, uh, Thursday, June first work session.
Um, I'd like to make separate motions. Um, a motion to provide a temporary stipend of five hundred dollars a month to Missy Morales for the period from January first, twenty twenty-three until, uh, the new Borough Manager's start date.
Sir, second.
Second.
Discussion. We just want to point out that this is, uh, there's a period of time in the office where we have limited staff and we appreciate the, uh, the, the work she's done to keep the office running smoothly for less than a month. Discussion. All right. We are voting on temporary stipend for Missy Morales. All those in favor? T M S.
Um, I move that, um, Alan Gizardo's, um, pay be adjusted to an annualized rate of one hundred twenty-five thousand for the period he serves as interim Borough Manager.
Second.
Second.
Discussion. Once again, this is just reflecting the additional workload and the challenge of running the office and it's in keeping ourselves for a growth. You got a discussion? All right. We are voting to adjust the salary of Alan Gizardo while he serves as interim Borough Manager. All those in favor? Okay.
Thank you.
I move to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Yes, I'll second.
Okay. All those in favor of the adjourn?
All right.
All right. Meeting is finally adjourned. We are done.
Yay.